Well, you're gonna be out in a minute.
Good evening and welcome, everyone, to tonight's first meeting in January of 2022. Happy New Year, everyone, and thank you all for being here. We'll call the meeting to order. Seven o'clock. First two items on the agenda are our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. So I think Mr. Paul, Pastor Paul Elgin is here. In fact, he was just here from First Presbyterian Church. Paul, thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, everybody here, Happy New Year and Merry Christmas because it's only the 10th day of Christmas. We have two more. So in that light, let us pray. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for a new year in which to thrive and grow, to work for good, lift up the sorrowful. Let us not so much despise the last two years as give thanks that by your grace we have navigated them. We should acknowledge their difficulty, though, so thank you, Father, for carrying us when we are not strong enough. We ask you to lift us up when we are down like a shepherd. When the lambs are weary or injured, place us upon your shoulders and carry us where you need to go. We know you share our burdens. So, Holy God, we ask that you protect the protectors, the fire, the police, the first responders and helpers that keep us safe. Bless and protect them with good health, those on the front lines in health care. And when they're weary, we ask you to lift them onto your broad shoulders and carry them. For those in public schools, students and educators, we continue to wrestle with teaching in safety, so show us your ways. Put us, who are tired of doing things differently, upon your shoulders that they may impart and receive the education needed for the future right here. Bless all city employees and every citizen of Casa Grande in this new year. Bless this meeting tonight and this council that it might seek your counsel first and follow your ways. And thank you that they are resolved to do good for the people of this town and all others. Now, resolutions are great, but they might come in one year and go out the other. So open our ears this year so that we can hear you and enjoy you at every junction. And when you tell us to turn starboard or port up or down, give us the discernment and courage that we will need to do so. So we've just celebrated a big holiday season and some family gatherings that have been put off for too long, too long. Let us carry the hope of this season forward, knowing that the hope we seek comes from you. As your prophet Isaiah said, "For unto us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government, the government shall be upon his shoulders." In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul. I knew there was a reason why I still had my Christmas decorations up for another two days. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
You're more than welcome.
Let the roll call show that all members are present. Mr. Matt Herman is on the phone.
So noted.
Matt, you are there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just checking, make sure you didn't dodge out. Next is minutes.
When it comes to the minutes, Mayor, we only have one to approve, and that's move approval of the City Council's regular meeting minutes from December 20th, 2021, as presented.
Second, sorry.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, minutes are approved. Next are claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to...
Go ahead, Matt.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims against the city dated December 15 through 28, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, claims are approved. Next is the meeting agenda. Any changes, Mr. Rains?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else in council? Okay, seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, the meeting minutes, our agenda is approved. We do have a special presentation tonight, and I'm assuming that's why we're very packed because you have a lot of nice family that came here for you. But this is a swearing in of Officers Chelsea Ruiz, David Sanger, and Austin Smet. You guys want to come forward, and we'll have our deputy city clerk swear you in.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to introduce Officer David Sanger, who came to us as a lateral officer from the Florence Police Department.
Be safe with him on your vote here.
Officer Chelsea Reese, who came to us as a lateral officer from the Gila River Police Department, and Officer Austin Smet, who we recruited out of the Gilbert Chandler Community College Police Academy.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and welcome, welcome to all of you.
Aye. If you want to follow me? Aye. State your name.
It's Austin Smet.
Do you follow me, swear?
Follow me, swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support?
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona?
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith?
Bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
Allegiance to the same.
And defend against all enemies?
And then against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of police officer?
Discharge the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, before you guys sit down, aren't there any family members who want to get some pictures of them up here? No? Have we brought your camera? All right. Well, I know Aaron got some good pictures, so you can check for it in the newspaper or ask him for a copy. Congratulations again. All right, next item on our agenda is our consent agenda item. This is item G. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone on council would like to change or remove anything on the consent agenda? Anybody from the public? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is item I. Oh, wait, sorry, item H. I like to blow right by that, don't I? Next is item H, which is public comments. So I don't have any public comment cards, but that doesn't mean that you can't come up and address the council. Just remind everyone that please keep your comments to three minutes, and we will, we can't address what you're talking to us about, but we can give direction to staff to follow up. So is there anybody who would like to address the council? The floor is open. All these people, and nobody wants to talk to council? Okay, then I'll close the floor, and we'll move on to item I, a word of contracts. First one is I-1.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. First of all, I just wanted to tell you guys all Happy New Year. I come before you this evening to talk to you about ordinance 3322. This is an ordinance where we're specifically asking you to authorize an expenditure not to exceed $400,000 to the Gallagher and Kennedy Law Firm. This will be to retain and represent a specific specialized attorney to represent the city of Casa Grande in all matters in regards to our certificate of necessity. In May of 2020, you all authorized us to move forward with our application, and we filed it with the Arizona Department of Health Services. That's allowed to be a 450-day process, and it was 450 days to the day that it moved out of that process. And we have now been scheduled for a hearing in front of an administrative law judge on February 4th. And since I wrote the RCA, the private ambulance company that works here in Casa Grande has also filed paperwork to intervene in the process. So that is essentially the elements of this. I think you guys are all pretty aware of the CON. We've talked about it a number of times, and you guys have had study sessions and voted on it a number of times. That's our request this evening.
Chief, you feel pretty confident that $400,000 would be well spent on acquiring the CON?
Absolutely, I do. And I mean, it's something that's necessary. We can't represent ourselves. Up to this point, we've been able to fill out the applications, answer all their questions with some help from the city attorney and the city manager. But at this point, it is in front of a judge, so we do require an attorney to do that for us.
And is their track record pretty good?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Bob, first?
Chief, I just want to thank you for taking the lead on this to you and your department. It is an important issue for the whole community. You obviously have the expertise in it, and it was necessary that you bring it forward and promote it and that you get the ball rolling. And I think, I know me personally, I'm on board 100% with it. I think it's the best thing to do, and I'm anxious, excited to get it underway.
I appreciate your comments. Keep in mind, it's not me that does it, it's them that does it.
I appreciate all the staff's work on it, so.
And I'm going to, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I agree. I know this has been a long process. I've been on the council for, I don't even know how many years anymore, but it's something we've discussed for a long time, so I do really appreciate you pushing through this. I think you've been very clear on the expectations and what we will see. So wish you the best, you know, on February 3rd, and I'm confident, you know, I think we owe it to our citizens, and that's what we have to remember, is we're trying to provide better service, you know, calls for service. And so that's the critical thing here, is making sure that we have a quality emergency service to our community. So I appreciate everything that the staff and hope all goes well.
Absolutely, thank you.
Matt, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank the chief for taking the time to talk to me, probably talk to everybody about it, I appreciate it. And this is very important for community service, or I mean, service to our community. So I'm looking forward to see how this goes. And again, I want to thank you for your perseverance on 450 days of doing this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Lisa, or Lisa, Donna, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna start that again. I just, you know, I talked to the chief as well at length about this. I've done a lot of research about this, and I think it's not something that we want to do, it's something we must do. And so I'm looking forward to a good outcome on this, that's all.
Anybody else, any other comments? Thank you, chief.
Thank you guys for your support.
So I'll entertain an ordinance number, please. Carla? I'm gonna call you Gloria here before the night's end.
Ordinance number 3322, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Gallagher and Kennedy, PA, to provide professional services on behalf of the City of Casa Grande Fire Department's application for a certificate of necessity to operate ambulance service within the city, authorizing the expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of an agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 3322 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, move to item I-2. This is approving a development agreement between the City of Casa Grande, LKY, and Copper Mountain Investment Limited.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be presenting that this evening.
Oh, it does say you. Sorry, Larry. I guess if I'd looked to the right, I wouldn't be looking at Paul.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I know that the council has taken action on a variety of items related to the Arizona Sonoran Copper Mining Company acquisition, primarily focused on zoning. This evening, staff is asking the mayor and council to consider a resolution approving the development agreement. And I thought what I would do for the individuals in the audience and watching from home is provide a bit of a history in relationship to the actual mine, talk a little bit about the various elements and provisions within the development agreement. I'll ask Mr. Wallace to assist me in that process. And as I move through and move to the recommendation, I do want the mayor and council to know that we have scheduled an executive session this evening, should you need to convene into an executive session. And given the number of individuals in the audience, if we do so, my recommendation would be going up to the conference room to hold that executive session. But obviously, if that is not needed, certainly we can move forward with the mayor and council considering the resolution and the development agreement. So I think it goes without saying that in recent months, the community has heard a lot about the Arizona Sonoran Copper Mining Company acquisition of both the existing mine as well as, and actually their ability and rights to operate the Cactus Mine, which is formerly known by many in our community as the Sacotone Mine. And that particular property where the Sacotone Mine is located is actually in the unincorporated areas of our community. It is adjacent, directly adjacent to our incorporated city limits, but the mining property today is still in Pinal County and will remain in Pinal County. I believe Mr. Tice and his team covered that during the zoning case itself. No. The mine was discovered in 1961 by American Smelting and Refining Company, known as Osarco, which mined the site from 1972 to 1984. There was certainly a fair amount of activity that took place during that 12-year period of time. And in 1982, the construction began on the production shaft to do some underground mining at that particular site. But ultimately, after the process had commenced, the company elected to suspend that engagement, primarily due to the market conditions, primarily the copper prices in 1984. In 2009, the site was placed into care of an environmental trust that was tasked with the care, stabilization, and reclamation of the site, and this work was done under the supervision of the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. And in July of 2020, the company known as Arizona Sonoran Copper completed the purchase of the site from the trust, taking custody of the property with the intent of resuming mining operations as a result of the increased demand for copper worldwide. The site is expected to be productive and also, let me step back there, the site is expected to be productive and also benefits from significant existing onsite infrastructure, including onsite power and water from prior operations. As a result, the company will be starting the work on the remediated former mine site with an environmental baseline study that has been approved by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Through its purchase and approval process, the company has sought to ensure at each level of the process that the company decisions that have been or will be made are based on the organization's core values and good governance practices, the impact to the community, and the environment. Arizona is the U.S.'s leading copper-producing state and accounts for approximately 68% of the domestic output in copper. In 2019, copper demand has continued to increase due to its highly efficient conductive properties and use in many renewable energy projects worldwide. Copper is also being increasingly viewed as a semi-renewable resource due to its ability to be reused and recycled without loss of performance. The extract copper from this mine, the preliminary environmental assessment, contemplates a simple process flow comprised of headleach operations followed by electro winnie, also known as electro-extraction through a solvent extraction process, or is expected to originate from three sources: the existing stockpiles, and I know a few of the council members have been out there, so you know what I'm talking about, the existing stockpiles that have been actually removed from the ground, an open pit operation, and an underground operation. The important element that we're going to discuss tonight happens to include, and that the mayor and council took action on from a zoning case perspective, the properties that are adjacent to the mine that are within our city limits. But earlier this year, the company also entered into a purchase agreement to acquire tracts of land within the incorporated city limits that are adjacent to the mine to use in mining and accelerate mining operations. The council, at its December 6 meeting, approved a change in the general plan for this area to manufacturing and industry, which was compliant with our 2030 general plan, which was recently approved by our voters, as well as approved a rezoning request by the owners that would permit these types of mining uses on the property within the city limits. That rezoning had certain conditions relating to the development of the property related to a view shed berm, the construction of a trail system, and an open space corridor. In addition to the rezoning, the owners have asked the city now to enter into a development agreement clarifying the timing of some of those conditions and to ensure that property may be used for its intended purposes, for mining purposes. The mayor and council has received various drafts of the development agreement, and I apologize for the number that you've seen. Typically, we would send these to you as we would come to final draft with the holidays and a variety of timing constraints. We ultimately put the final touches on the final draft today, which is uploaded in your Agenda Quick system. And I believe, Mr. Powell, there should be a hard copy for you as well. A copy of the proposed development agreement, as I said, is available. The Request for Council Action Form has been crafted to summarize the primary commitments by the parties. Because there is no financial commitment by the City of Casa Grande, the provision of this agreement are focused on specific obligation by both parties. And if I can just pause there, Mayor, members of the council, that is one of the primary differences that you're seeing this come before the mayor and council in a resolution form versus ordinance. A bit of a difference in our development agreement process with various companies. Many times, the city has a financial obligation. In this particular case, our obligations are somewhat limited in scope, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. But I'll talk specifically about what Cactus 110 LLC, the company's obligations are. They will construct and remove of infrastructure improvements. And in essence, they will start by constructing a native desert vegetation landscape berm along the eastern and northeastern boundaries of the property within the incorporated city limits. That was a condition that was actually approved by the mayor and council during the zoning case, essentially to serve as a view shed, if you will, between any development that would happen east of the property or north of the property. The berm improvement shall be approximately 1,000 feet from the eastern and northeastern boundaries of the property and approximately 600 feet in width and 100 feet in height, but shall not exceed 120 feet in height. Cactus Shell also, as part of the development of the property, dedicate and develop trail improvements for the city's regional trail system. The trail improvements will be made on the exterior boundary of the berm and will connect the path to the city's regional trail system and will be available for the public's recreation use. Upon completion, the trail improvements will be dedicated to the city. Cactus 110 shall also dedicate an open space corridor between the berm and the property line to help preserve the area. They also are committing to a local hiring initiative, and I won't go into a whole lot of depth in this, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, but ultimately, what they're essentially agreeing to do is ensure that Cactus advertises locally and also purposes to give preference in employment and training opportunities to the resident in Casa Grande who meet the minimum qualifications with respect to education and work experience for the positions which they are to be employed. And there are some thresholds that are outlined in the development agreement, just a process that they've agreed to ultimately go through in those hiring initiatives. From the city's perspective, what we would be agreeing to in this development agreement is an expedited review. Essentially, that what we've committed to is a review that would typically follow all our normal process that all of our industrial development companies have been able to take advantage of. And in that, the city would agree to expeditiously and in good faith, take such steps as reasonably necessary to review and issue permits for the intended use of the property. This includes all plans and permits. These will be completed within 20 days, 20 business days, which fits within the city's current regulatory timelines. The city also agrees to allow for the intended use of this property, which we know is a mine, in accordance with the development standards set forth and approved in the PAD zoning, and not to impose additional dedications or exactions not currently permitted or required by applicable laws. If I can just close on the development agreement terms, I think it's important to note that the term of this agreement will become effective upon its execution. And I know that there are some additional discussions that are going on. are some additional discussions that are going on about the formal recording and execution of this development agreement, and I'll talk briefly about that here in a second. But ultimately, from that point, the development agreement will be for a term of 20 full calendar years unless sooner terminated as provided in the agreement. There are some termination clauses should the mining operation cease and without any expectations of mining returning. The company has conducted economic impact analysis and fiscal impact analysis of the mine. In fact, the analysis that staff has been using was completed by the Rounds Consulting Group in late 2020, and the analysis summarizes both the restart of and the future development of the mine for anticipated economically, economic useful life period of 28 years. I understand that that may not be the full case, but essentially, that was the parameters that were ultimately listed as part of that analysis. The report suggests the mining operation will produce immense economic activity for Casa Grande, Pinal County, and the state of Arizona by generating new jobs and tax revenues. The key findings of the report outline that one-time construction and future capital expenditures planned for the useful life of the mine are estimated to total approximately $642 million. Construction of capital expenditures for the mine over the useful life period yields approximately $413 million in wages, which is equivalent to an average of 287 jobs each year earning, on average, a salary of $51,400. The wages and overall economic output produced by the operations is equal to $1.2 billion and $4.4 billion respectively during that period. And finally, new tax revenues to the state, county, and city are expected to total approximately $241.3 million or an equivalent of $8.6 million annually at full production of this operations. And as I've pointed out, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, there's not a fiscal impact to the city. Essentially, we are agreeing to ensure that we're expeditiously reviewing the plans that come in for the area that is within the city limits. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'll pause at this point and entertain any questions. But again, if there's specific legal questions, I would, we do have the opportunity to adjourn into an executive session. Before I turn it over, Brett, is there anything that you can think of that I should add to this?
No, Larry, I think Mr. Raines obviously has gone over the relevant terms of the development agreement, and from our standpoint, it is a pretty simple one compared to some that we do, right? There's no economic incentives, so we're really talking about clarifying some of the things in the zoning as far as when the berm would need to be built, when the trail would need to be dedicated. And that's the primary purpose of the development agreement. And from, obviously, from the developer's perspective, to make sure anytime you're dealing with, you know, sort of a sensitive environmental area that's requiring a big investment, to make sure that we're not going to switch the zoning on them, which I would never recommend you do anyway under Prop 207 because we'd be buying a mine that we probably don't want to operate.
And, Mr. Mayor, before we get into the questions, just one additional item that I'd like to mention is that the resolution has been crafted as we have many of these most recent development agreements that would allow the city manager and the city attorney to make any, what I would consider to be immaterial edits to the document before it is actually executed. I believe that the document that the mayor and council has has been approved to form with, by both the city attorney and myself. As I said, we're working out a few of the additional details related to the closing of the land and the ownership at that particular time. But ultimately, we stand ready this evening, Mr. Mayor, to answer any questions and field any comments that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? You covered it pretty thoroughly. I just want to make sure that one line that I had talked about on the first page was fixed under the recitals.
It has been corrected.
Because I don't have the corrected copy, so. So they've added the northeast boundary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there is one caveat to that, at least to my understanding and knowledge, and I'll ask my team here and Mr. Wallace to correct me if I'm wrong. The difference between the trail on the northern boundary and the eastern boundary is that the company is obligated to build the eastern boundary trail, right? The northern boundary trail is essentially a dedication to the city, but the city would be responsible for making the connection point to ultimately our trail master system. Brett, you want to?
Yeah, and I think, so essentially, anywhere along the berm is where they're going to be doing the trail, which is kind of all on the eastern half of the property. The only other spot that they kind of impact the trail is up on Val Vista, way on the west portion of the property. It's a couple of miles away from this trail piece. So the piece that they'll be developing, which was in the zoning, is all the stuff that will be along the view shed berm. They're also going to dedicate the other piece to us along Val Vista.
So I thought my understanding was that there was going to be a view shed burn on the northeast side, too?
Right. It goes along the eastern and the northeastern part of the property. But again, it's all, if you look at that piece of property...
And that trail is going to run along all the berm?
Yes. It will along all the berm, but if you really look at the property, you could sort of bifurcate it somewhere around the pit, and the berm is really kind of north and east of the pit, right? And also, there's the left side of that.
It's on the northeast side.
They're not building a trail kind of west of that.
Yeah, I just, because it says in the rest of the document, it calls it the northeast and eastern boundary.
And it does.
It just didn't on the first page, that's all.
And if it doesn't, we'll make sure. That's one of the reasons why, as we move through these, we always ask that Larry has the ability to make minor changes to it.
Okay.
As well as sometimes we have ownership changes or otherwise prior to closing, and we want the ability to make sure that we can make any minor immaterial edits to it, such as that one.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a resolution number, please. Carla?
Resolution number 5373, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a development agreement between the City of Casa Grande, LKY Copper Mountain Investments Limited Partnership, and Cactus 110 LLC, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the development agreement and other documents reasonably necessary for the purposes of implementing the development agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5373 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Item K, we'll start with K1, continuing approval of ordinance, repealing the court default cost recovery fee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Tonight, the city staff are requesting that the mayor and council repeal ordinances 1397.02.2 and 1397.02.09, which establishes the court default cost recovery fee. This ordinance was originally established in 1997, and it was established as an administrative fee to recoup costs associated with staff issuing suspensions on individuals' driver's license for either failing to appear on a civil traffic violation or failure to pay on a civil traffic violation. Essentially, what would happen is once a person defaulted, staff would prepare paperwork to notify and direct motor vehicle to suspend the driving privilege of that individual. Once that default judgment was satisfied, then staff would prepare the paperwork again to notify motor vehicle once again that that judgment has been satisfied and that the person would now be eligible to reinstate their license. A lot of legislation went into effect in 2021, and legislation also affected this ordinance. Effective September 29 of 2021, courts are no longer permitted or allowed by law to suspend a person, suspend their driving privilege for either failure to appear or failure to pay on a civil traffic default fee. The Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts, they do manage the court's case management system. They have put a stop on that fee effective September 29 of 2021. So effective September 29 of 2021, we are no longer assessing that fee. So this request is just kind of to clean up the city code so it corresponds with what the court is actually doing as well. Prior to that date, the court did assess those fees and will continue to assess and collect those fees that were properly applied, but effective September 29, 2021, we are no longer assessing those fees as we are no longer processing those suspensions. And I'd be more than glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Anyone? Matt, any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll call for an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1397.02.17, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, repealing the court default cost recovery fee set forth in section 2.24.120 of the city code, of Casa Grande Municipal Code, sorry, establishing severability of the components of the ordinance and establishing an effective date thereof.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1397.02.17 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Thank you, Judge. Item K2 is our next item. It's resolution 5372, and this is our transit implementation plan.
Mayor, council members, staff recommends the mayor and city council approve the near-term transportation implementation plan, hiring of a full-time transit manager to support the plan, and development of a request for proposals to engage a contractor to operate the service. The city of Casa Grande was recently designated as a recipient of funds from the Federal Transit Administration by the governor of Arizona. This designation provides approximately $2.57 million of CARES Act monies. This is in addition to the future Federal Transit Administration 5307 grant monies to support this. This is to support the establishment and maintenance of public transportation within the city of Casa Grande. In 2019, the transit development plan was prepared for the city. The plan outlined both near-term and long-term alternatives for establishing public transportation services within the city. Alternatives were primarily focused on fixed and deviated route service. More recently, the concept of microtransit has become an increasingly popular public transportation service option that was not considered at the time of contact, conduct of that plan. Microtransit is a flexible, on-demand, shared ride service, which riders book in advance or on the day of travel by phone, computer, or smart device. Riders can specify their pickup and drop-off locations within a defined service area. Additional research has been conducted to determine the feasibility of this type of transit service within the city. A variety of service options were previously presented to city council. Based on feedback from council and city staff, the most likely service option would consist of providing service within an initial service area or zone, and that's picked it on the map shown. Service within the zone is envisioned to be provided Monday through Friday for 12 hours each day. Three vehicles will be required to accomplish response times of 20 to 30 minutes. It is recommended that, at least in the initial years, the services be provided through a third-party contractor rather than have the city purchase and maintain the vehicles and hire staff to drive the vehicles. This will require hiring a full-time city employee to manage the transit program, as there are several administrative requirements the city must perform annually to continue receiving FTA grants. The CARES money would primarily fund the transit service for the first four years with a local investment of approximately $100,000 annually. Local funds are mainly associated with the salary of the full-time transit program manager, for which some of the duties are not eligible for reimbursement through the Federal Transit Administration. Compensation for this staff position has been included in the FY '22 budget. However, beginning in year five, a local contribution would increase to approximately $466,000, since CARES money would be fully expended in prior years. This slide provides a breakdown of the anticipated funding for the first five years of the transit Alternatives, several alternatives to the proposed service model were also considered, including expanded service and reduced service options. For example, one such reduced service model assumed three vehicles, five days a week, eight hours per day. This scenario eliminates service during what might typically be considered the morning and evening peak commuter hours for workers. With this reduced service scenario, it is anticipated that CARES money would primarily fund the transit service for the first five years with a local investment of approximately $100,000 annually. Local funds are, again, mainly associated with the salary of the full-time transit program manager. Once all CARES money are expended, the local contribution to continue this level of service is estimated at approximately $350,000 for the following year. Many additional service options are available to offer increased service within the city, the costs correlated to the number of vehicles, service area, days per week, and hours per day. This slide shows some of the few potential cost options and an estimate of additional local funding that would be likely required in year five to provide this additional service beyond the initial service recommendation. Sorry, I seem to have lost my... So with that, entertaining any questions you have. And with me tonight is Amy Miranda Wilson and company to help answer any questions you may have. Once again, we are recommending that first option that I talked about, 12 hours a day, five days a week, three vehicles.
Any comments? We've had a lot of discussion on this. Mr. Lavender?
Dwayne, can you tell me what the, if approved tonight, what the timeline for implementation would be, your best guess?
Yes, there's a lot of Federal Transit Administration things we need to do between now and when we can actually start the system. I'm going to say in the range of a year.
So the five-year would start at the end of that, when we start rolling, right?
Well, we will spend some money on the transit manager and stuff just right away, but the rest of that money is...
You know, I've received a couple comments about the transit coordinator. Would that person be assigned to your department, or would it be assigned to Community Services Department?
So the current thought is it would be in Public Works.
And if I can, Mr. Mayor, to address Councilmember Lavender's question specifically, in our research of these new transit system programs, we find that it's very typical that the program would originate in the Public Works Department. We, as a staff, have had discussions. We anticipated that, based on some of the comments and feedback that we received at the last council meeting, that this may become an issue. It's one of the reasons why we included the job description that had been created as part of the fiscal year '22 budget for your review this evening. You know, essentially, at least from my chair, essentially, I believe that we have a couple of options. I'm not sure that, to Mr. Itell's comment about moving it into Community Services or another department, that that would prove... another department, that that would, that would prove to be any more effective than it would be with Public Works. However, we are looking at a model that would potentially house the transit manager and the city manager's office. We've not made a final decision on that at this point. Obviously, we were looking for council direction and certainly any feedback on the structure. I've talked to a number of the council members throughout the course of the weekend and the day related to the ultimate structure. What I can tell you is that, at least in my mind, it would be narrowed down to Public Works and/or the city manager's office.
Thank you. Bob?
So, Mayor, I've voiced concerns about this project before, and I wanted to voice them once more, and it's going to sound like I'm not in favor of this, but I'm going to support it, mainly because Dwayne and Amy have bent over backwards trying to make adjustments to this, trying to form it into a project that is workable. But I wanted to state a couple of things. Number one, from my view, the number one reason to engage in public transportation is to reduce traffic, to get the number of cars on the road down to a minimum so that it's manageable. Our customer base for our program seems to be people that don't otherwise have a ride, and that's all well and good. I understand that, and I hope that we provide a service for those people that is usable and is appreciated by them. The other thing is the grant funding for this. I think rule of thumb is grant funding should be used to address a problem that's been identified, and we've exhausted other possibilities and ways to get the program that will address the problem off the ground. In this case, we seem to be looking at grant funding in search of a project. The money is out there, and we can use it, but it's very narrow, the things we can use it on. So I understand that as well. My other concern is that we have transit services to the east and to the west of us, and those entities, their big challenge seems to be getting people to ride the service. And so I think my concern, I would lower it from a fear to a concern, is that a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, we're going to be scratching our heads and saying, how do we get people to ride this? We've invested all these dollars, and it's out there, and people aren't riding it. But on the upside, as I said, Amy and Dwayne have worked very hard on this. I know there's support on council for this, for this program, and I think there's support within the community as well. And the grant funding makes it a little more easy to swallow for me. It's kind of a no-money-down deal that we're getting, that we can get into this and see how it works. And if it doesn't, I'm assuming that the council would be on board with backtracking a little bit if it doesn't work. So I had specifically asked that this be brought back to council because I wanted to voice those concerns. I didn't want to just vote yes on it without an explanation. But all that being said, I am supportive of it, and I will be voting yes tonight. Thank you.
Lisa?
You know, Bob, and I appreciate the comments. Of course, being on this committee for several years, these have been concerns that the committee has expressed through the whole process also. And I agree, I think Dwayne and Amy and several other staff members have really taken a look at what the true need is and how can we adjust and use some of the grant funding to satisfy the needs of our community. So I think that, you know, the ridership thing is critical, and I think it goes to what Larry said on who takes this project on. You know, we all got an email, a couple emails from people that are concerned on which department, and are we going to, is that person going to make this a priority? And I think that's what's important to me, is making sure that wherever this lands, you know, even though we're saying, hey, if it doesn't work, you know, we understand that we might have to, you know, if we have to, you know, get rid of it or make some changes, but we want it to succeed. So whoever is going to take this project down, whichever department, you know, to me, this is critical. Let's make sure that we're putting all of our energies into making it successful. When I sat in some of those community meetings, and there's definitely a need. People can't get around, they don't have, you know, they have one vehicle for, you know, eight people in their house, there's handicapped people that can't get around. So I heard the need from the community, so I really hope whoever that transit manager is and whatever department, you know, we really, we need to know that this is a priority, and we want to make it successful so we can, you know, satisfy some of the needs and demands of our community. But I appreciate your concerns because I think it's something that we've all had. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yeah, Matt.
Yeah, I want to thank Bob for bringing up those concerns, and that's a good word for it. I remember a couple years ago, I was against some sort of transit program. I remember sitting in a meeting with Ralph Rela specifically, and he spelled out some needs in the community that I wasn't aware of, and I appreciated that. And along with Bob, I'd like to see, you know, after last week's presentation, or last meeting's presentation, when they talked about analyzing the data, keeping, analyzing the data the whole time to make sure we're doing the right thing and get that ridership. And another thing I want to make sure they come straight on is getting people to and from work, getting them to jobs, which I think was one of the big things for me about having some sort of transit system. And I want to thank them for going after the grants and everything, so I'm hoping this is successful.
All right, thank you, Matt. And just a couple comments from me. I know Larry and I had this conversation today about where this might reside. Ultimately, it probably belongs in Public Works, or, excuse me, in Kevin's area. But I think at the start, as we analyze this data and we're looking at, you know, ridership and trying to get ridership and all the things we want to do to make it successful, that might reside better in the city manager's office, where it could be, you know, coddled a little bit, you know, and kind of brought up to speed, especially with maybe one of Larry's staff, who this would be a big deal for him to kind of handle and have another person to manage. So we've had that conversation, and I think, at least that from my perspective, that's kind of where I'm leaning. And because I too have concerns about transit, because I think as technology changes, transit's going to change. So, I mean, we have to keep our eye on this. In five years from now, this may totally look different. You know, we could be, have autonomous vehicles going out and driving around and picking up people. So it's, it is a changing environment. I think that we need to try it because I think there is a need out there. I don't think this is throwing money at, and trying to find a need. I might disagree with you on that comment, Bob, but I do think that there is a need. I have talked to many people, and it's more about the need for the folks who really don't have a way to get around, and we have a lot of them here in town, and they live in this corridor that's been identified. So the corridor, I think, is good. I think that we just need to get this out, get it communicated somehow, and get them able to, you know, call us up and ask for a ride in the end, so. All right, well, I appreciate everybody's comments, and then I'm going to go ahead and call for a resolution, please.
Resolution number 5372. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the City of Casa Grande conceptual near-term transit implementation plan, authorizing hiring of a full-time transit manager, and authorizing the appropriate procurement and all other necessary documentation by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5372 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. I did want to read into the records a letter of support that I did get from Ralph Rela. He wanted to make sure that, to thank council for looking at this initiative. Ralph's been a big fan and supporter of transit for a long time, so he just wanted to share his support for the mobile transit hybrid, so. All right, can I get a roll call vote, please? Carla?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
I have a couple of questions. The money that's in this for five years, where it has local contribution, where does that come from? Does that come from the city or just?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Powell, in the program that has been identified this evening, in the first four years, the city is responsible for roughly $100,000 a year. That would come directly from the city's general fund. It would be the allocation towards the program. And when you get into year five, depending on what the program actually looks like at that point in time, if it stays the same, it's been projected to be $466,000. But essentially, that would come from, that would be the contribution from the city's general fund towards a transit system. And I do want to make an important point to all of the council members. The transit service in itself is not a fully funded federal program. Once we move in, out of the CARES Act funding and we move into 5307 funding, there is a contribution that is made. There's an allocation system that gets distributed to the state that ultimately then comes to the city, but we will be responsible for some portion match. And I'm going to say, just to, just to make sure that everybody's clear, it's roughly 50%. So as this program, if this program ever expands, then, or contracts, that ultimately the city's obligation is going to be likely one-half of what the federal funds are that we're receiving. But at least in my mind, what we've, what staff has attempted to do is give the council and the community a bit of a runway to better understand what the ridership is and what this particular service boundary would be, and many of the things that the council talked about tonight, the cooperation with the, with our industry, the cooperation with other transit providers, building a system that ultimately best fits the needs of our community. But ultimately, I guess the message that I'm sending is twofold. Number one is that there is an obligation on the part of the city to get into the transit business, and number two, and that will be coming from our general fund. And number two, that at least in my estimation, this will be a program that we begin to evaluate within the first year of operations to determine a number of components that ultimately will come back before council annually to determine the type of contribution you want to make to transit.
Are we, when we approve this, then we're stuck with the five years?
No.
No.
We are not. We essentially are looking at this as a year-by, a year-to-year type of a program. I say that knowing that on many occasions, when a government offers a service, it becomes somewhat difficult to narrow that down. And I recognize that ultimately, those are variables that staff and the mayor and council have to consider when we're, when we're starting a new program of this nature, which is why I'm trying to be very cautious to all of you on our financial obligation. But essentially, at least in my view, what we will do with the money that we've received through the CARES Act, it will give us a bit of an opportunity to evaluate the system, our ridership, and ultimately determine the amount of contribution that we feel comfortable making as a city, and number two, that will essentially meet the needs of our residents in the community. But to answer your question, Mr. Powell, the answer's no.
Yes, it did. I won't be around for year three, but I think by year three, hopefully, you would have an indication
Yes.
of how it's doing and how it's going. I'm not going to vote on this. I'm going to just pass it on. I don't want to vote against it, and I don't want to vote for it, so.
Can you abstain?
I'm going to abstain, yeah. I got stained anyway.
I can never make someone vote. You know, your charter does say that unless you have a conflict, you're supposed to vote, but, you know, I've seen people walk off the dais when they don't want to vote as well, so. Ultimately, can determine how you, you know, how you want to go. Technically, it should be a vote, but if Mr. Powell doesn't elect to vote, I can't force it.
It's a non-vote. Not a no vote, but a non-vote.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Okay.
First time.
Yeah.
All right, now we'll move into our public hearings. Next item is L1. This is amendment, mending zoning ordinance and multifamily residential R2 property. Planning and zoning department. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you all.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a zone change request for a portion of Mission Ranch 2 planned area development, and the request is to rezone a portion of that property to the R2 zone. A little bit of background, Mission Ranch Planned Area Development Zone District is located on the east side of Peert Road, just north of Rodeo. If Rodeo were to be extended east beyond Peert, it currently exists as a 61.28 acre planned area development zone district. The western 16 acres is designated for commercial and office uses, and then the 45.39 acre area is designated for single-family residential use. Just to the north of that is the Mission Ranch PAD that is currently under development. LGI Homes is constructing houses in the western portion of that subdivision. And then if you notice on the screen, there's a north-south wash that splits that area. On the east side of that wash, it has been platted into single-family lots, but has not yet been improved. So the area in question lies to the south of Mission Ranch, and it's an area known as Mission Ranch 2. Its current PAD approves for 157 home sites at a density of 3.45 dwelling units per acre. The request is to revise that single-family area to an R2 zone. The intent of the rezone would maintain the single-family residential land use. In fact, one of the recommended conditions is that we would restrict multifamily development in this area, even though R2 is a multifamily zone. R2 also allows single-family development, however, and the reason why the request this evening is to revise this area to R2 is to allow for the density to increase from 157 homes to a maximum of 204 homes at the maximum allowed density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre. We do have a preliminary plat under review, and ultimately, should the zone change be approved, one of the following steps would be for the preliminary plat to be reviewed by planning commission, and then ultimately, council would be deciding on a final plat for this property. But in the review of the preliminary plat, they're showing two lot size areas. There's an area towards the north with 50-foot minimum lot widths, and the area to the south are 45-foot minimum lot widths. Whether this property is zoned as a PAD or an R2, essentially, as property develops, there would be a number of roadway improvements required. So there would be the extension of Rodeo Road east of Peert Road to accommodate development. It would be half-street improvements leading to whatever area It would be half-street improvements leading to whatever area is to be developed. And then the half-street for Arizona Road on the east would be constructed. And if you notice, it does propose a tie-in to the Mission Ranch neighborhood to the north via Whittier Lane. The reason for the zone change request is that this property does have certificates of assured water supply. Currently, the number of certificates are for 157 home sites. Due to recently passed state legislation, these certificates can potentially be increased. The developer has indicated that based on new analysis, they can increase the number of water certificates to 204 without using any additional groundwater, which is the key behind that state legislation. No additional groundwater can be withdrawn, but due to new innovations in fixtures and faucets and more conservative landscaping, an increase in certificates can be sought. The Casa Grande General Plan 2030 Neighborhoods Land Use Designation does indeed allow for a maximum of 4.5 dwelling units per acre. So therefore, 204 would be the maximum number allowed.
That's based on what density?
A 4.5 dwelling units per acre.
Not 4.6?
Correct.
Right.
And that's a good point to make, that even if the Arizona Department of Water Resources determined that they could get 220 lots, they wouldn't be allowed to go forward with that based on our density maximum of 4.5. It would limit them to 204 lots. There's some differences between properties zoned PAD and properties zoned R2, and that, and this is the driver behind the zone change request. Knowing that they can seek additional certificates of assured water supply and increase the number of single-family lots, they wouldn't be able to achieve that under the current PAD zoning due to the fact that it has some restrictive standards with regard to the fact that the minimum lot size in a PAD is 6,000 square feet. For every lot, less than 7,000 square feet and equal number of lots over 8,000 square feet have to be provided. And the minimum lot width required in PADs are 55, is 55 feet with 5 and 10-foot minimum side yard setbacks. The R2 is less restrictive. It allows the minimum lot size to be 5,000 square feet, and the minimum lot width is 45 feet. And development in the R2 is allowed to have 5-foot minimum side yard setbacks. To capture some of the design quality that we see in PAD zones while allowing for an increase in lots, staff and Planning Commission has recommended a number of conditions to help ensure quality design. So firstly, as an R2 zone, it would be still subject to having an HOA or special maintenance district to care for the common areas, the common landscape and retention areas. Whether it's a special maintenance district or HOA would be up to the discretion of the city. As I mentioned on a previous slide, no multifamily structures or multiple single-family dwellings on a singular lot would be permitted as this is intended to be a single-family residential development. The maximum density allowed would be 4.5, and so therefore, the maximum number of dwelling units would be 204. Housing product would be required, and that's something that would typically be a requirement of Planned Area Development Zones. But even as an R2, we would require housing product, which is essentially design review, and that could be administratively considered. And then we would also apply certain design standards such as the requirement for front yard landscape packages, which would be submitted with the housing product. There'd be specifics with regard to residential fence returns and perimeter theme walls and street scape entrances. The specifics of this have been included within the RCA. One of the most notable conditions that I'd like to highlight is the requirement for a minimum amount of open space to be 20% for the area. And I want to take a few moments to explain that. As a PAD, the minimum amount of open space required is 15%. Currently, the Mission Ranch 2 PAD, should no zone change action occur, and they were to develop exactly as approved, would be about 17.5%. It currently exceeds the amount of minimum open space. Interestingly, the R2 zone landscape minimum is 10%. It's, it's less than PAD. So staff and Planning Commission made a determination that since they are indeed requesting an increase in lots, and the R2 zone does afford them that ability, there should be a proportional increase in common open space, and we determine that to be a minimum of 20%. And there is some rationale insofar as the fact that with an increase in lots, you're going to have smaller private yards, you're going to have smaller side yards. And so what is lost in terms of the loss of, of a private yard area can be somewhat made up by having a larger common open space, which would be a minimum of 20%.
The side yards are going to be 5-foot on either side?
Correct. That would be the minimum.
You know, that's terrible. You're talking about density. I, I, when you used to drive into Maricopa, and the ugliest thing was all of those homes looking just the same and not very much. You could hunt, take a cup of sugar and pass to your neighbor right out the window. Why in the world is it, you've got a bunch of density, and then you're going to be 5-foot setbacks on both sides only?
That would be the minimum that the R2 would allow.
My God. That's, I sure hate to hear that.
When when considering zone changes, there are review criteria that have to be evaluated, and the staff report provided in the RCA goes into it in more detail. But essentially, we look at these three criteria, and they're centered around compliance and consistency with the city's general plan. And this area is within the neighborhood's land use, which does allow single-family residential developments with a maximum density of 4.5. As I mentioned, currently, the density is 3.45, so would increase by a little over one dwelling unit per acre. And we also look at whether certain land use elements and goals are met. There is an applicable element within the general plan that talks about increasing the range of housing choices and products available to all members of the Casa Grande community. And one of the action steps is to increase the amount of medium-density housing. At 4.5 dwelling units per acre, that's still not technically considered medium-density, but it would certainly be an increase in density when considering what the currently approved density for that area is. Regarding the public notification process, it did meet, if not exceeded, that which is required by the code. There were no public comments as a result of the public notification efforts, except for the owner of the property, who did provide a letter, which has been included in your RCA, expressing opposition to the requirement of the minimum of 20% landscaping. He contends that 15% is more than adequate. And I'd be happy to further elaborate on the details of that letter if you had some specific questions about it, but it has been included for your consideration. Staff and Planning Commission do recommend that city council approve this zone change for Mission Ranch 2, subject to these conditions that I explained this evening and have been further elaborated in your RCA. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Lavender?
James, can you go back to the community map, please? I'll keep going, please. Yeah. Do we have any other developments where they, they are back-to-back? Where you have R1 back-to-back to R2, like we do in the slide here on the right? Where backyards are not going to be evenly aligned in Casa Grande? Isn't there normally a separation from R1 to R2 neighborhoods?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lavender, so technically, the area to the north is PAD, not R1.
Yeah.
But, but to your point, it, it does allow currently for a larger lot than what you'd be getting with the R2. So there are probably some instances. I, I don't know right off the top of my head.
I'll go hazem.
Right. What, I would have to sort of come up with a more comprehensive list.
It's not, not an R2 to a, because it's all a PAD.
Right.
It has the small lots next to the big lots, so they don't, don't all line up.
But to the crux of your point, we do look at compatibility, because I think that's what's driving your question, is gee, normally, isn't there some separation between lot sizes? One of the things that I would point out is that at least based on the preplat, they're proposing their wider lot product to the north. So that would potentially be more of a benefit because the minimum lot widths to the north are 55 feet. In looking at the current plat for Mission Ranch to the north, there isn't immediate lots along the north side. There's a east-west street, but there would be a concern along the proposed lots on the west side, because to your point, those, those lots do back up with wider lots. However, I don't know if, if 55 versus 50 is a significant compatibility issue.
Well, the other concern I have, I think that last, in the original development, that last street, and when you talk about the 300 feet, my assumption is most of those lots have not sold yet. So we're only talking about one owner, which is the developer, correct?
Right. In fact, none of them have, because all of the area that's currently abutting Mission Ranch 2 is undeveloped because it's everything east of the wash. So it's been platted, but it's all under one ownership.
See that wash there? Everything to the
Right.
Everything to the left of that wash is what they're building. Nothing to the right.
Right. I guess my concern is people buying, are they going to know when they start buying there? What, that there's a different PAD on the lots behind them?
This guy could come in and change it to, change his zoning anyway. Could he not?
It's, it's very possible that the undeveloped part of Mission Ranch could come in for a zone change request. It's possible that this property that is being considered for R2 could end up revising and requesting a different land use.
He's just revising this? There's no, nobody building here yet. This is not that I'm aware of. These guys are just trying to maximize the lots.
I said I don't agree with it, but I don't either.
Any other comments or questions on this? Mr. Powell?
This would be single family only?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, correct.
And the single-family can't have, or the, not the single-family, the multifamily home? The, the R2 home, that, that's going to be single-family?
Correct. It would be known as an R2 zone, but it would be limited to single-family dwellings on an individual lot. You could only have one.
Yeah, they can't put, what, they can't put multi, multifamily on the same lot that they have that R2 on, right?
Correct.
And they can't put one R2 behind another R2?
So currently, that's not being proposed. It would just be one.
I saw it written up in what was here, but I
So multifamily would be prohibited here.
It's one of the conditions.
Due to the recommended conditions. One of the things to consider, too, when you look at existing R2 zones throughout the city, it wouldn't automatically mean that a duplex is allowed or multiple single-family dwellings could be constructed on that lot because there's certain minimum lot sizes that would have to be met. You have to have at least, for example, at least a 6,000-square-foot lot to have a duplex, and the lot would, itself would have to be at least 70 feet wide. So if this were to be platted as proposed, even without that condition, they would have an inability to construct duplexes just because of the, of the mere fact that they're not proposing lots the size or the width to allow that. But we're recommending a condition that specifically restricts multifamily development just because there's no way to guarantee that a future replat might occur or a different configuration of lots might occur that wasn't being contemplated at this time that could eventually lead to multifamily development. So we're, we're cutting that off at the pass by putting a condition of record in the recommendation that would limit it to, that would basically restrict multifamily development. There are other uses allowed in the R2, other than single-family. With the approval of the conditional use, someone can propose a religious institution, a school, but that would, that would be subject to a separate application and evaluated based on specific criteria associated with the conditional use permit process.
How many single-family homes could be on one of those lots?
So only one per lot would be allowed.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So it would, it would basically be limited to a maximum of 204, based on the density.
Bob?
James, I, I think you kind of presented the open space as kind of a question for the council to address, and, and supporting the required 20% open space. And I just wanted to chime in on that. We, we've seen this before. We've seen the PADs come in requesting R2, and that requirement to have 20% open space has been
Been consistent.
Consistent, so I don't know if we need to address that other than approving the ordinance, but I'm certainly in support of that.
It's in the rule, it's in their, it's in the guidelines.
That's what planning wanted, was 20%.
Well, that's what we're getting, isn't it?
We're getting 20%.
Yeah, that's what they're
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, and I appreciate them pushing that, you know, continuing to push the 20%, because obviously, you had a pushback from the owner here, so hopefully, they understand. And, you know, we talk so much about variety of housing choices, and, and I think that, again, this is an option. Not everyone, people don't have to live here, but I, I'm curious. Of course, we're reading articles on real estate and where, you know, what, how, much houses cost these days, and, you know, I think I just read something, wasn't it just recently, like the average home in Casa Grande, now it's gone up to $340,000, and, you know, our, our salary is going up, you know, at the same rate, but, you know, it, would it, would it help us to understand? Because, you know, we talk about the demand, and are people going to buy this? Like, who wants, you, you, I heard you say it, who wants to live there when it's 5, 5-foot? But people do. So I'm just curious if there's something out there that you can provide us that shows the demand, that shows, I'm not in real estate. You, you are, so you probably see this, and I read articles, I pay attention, but is there something we can take a look at that shows that this is a demand? That shows that people want this type of housing product? That it's not just us just giving in to, you know, these guys coming in? So I don't know if there's something you can provide us, because we're, we're seeing this R2 request come up a little bit more, and, you know, the smaller acres or dwellings per acre. So I find it would be helpful to just maybe have some type of research that shows that this is demand, a demand, and, you know, it, it helps our community.
How compatible are they? How close are they to other developments?
That's a development right there.
Yeah. And now is that a filled development right now?
It's almost filled, yep.
What, what is that? Is that?
That is, what's it called? What's the builder?
So LGI Homes is constructing in there.
LGI.
The lots, the lots probably vary in size. The minimum in there is going to be 55 feet with 5 and 10 setbacks. The minimum, I don't know for certain if within Mission Ranch 1, the minimum is indeed 6,000. It may be a little larger than that, but that's
There's some small lots. There's small lots.
What is the zoning on that?
It's a Planned Area Development.
Right, that's what I thought. But they're not going to follow the directions on that, or that's awful close to the others to make it look pretty bad.
They're already built.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
It's really good.
Yep. These are not. All right. Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to any public comments. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on L1, now is your opportunity. Open the floor. Okay. Not seeing anybody run up the podium, then I'll close the floor, and I will call for the ordinance number, please. Carla.
Ordinance?
I didn't mess up yet.
Ordinance number 1178 dot 241 dot 1, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development, PAD, to multifamily residential R2 on property generally located east of Peert Road and north of Rodeo Road in Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178 point 241 point 1 as presented.
All right. I have a motion in a second. Can I please get a roll call vote? Carla.
Councilmember Lavender?
No.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
I would know, I'm, I'm very disappointed in what we're doing in our building around town and the kind of reputation our community is receiving with the, the kind of development we have. It's not, not a healthy thing.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. That concludes most of tonight's business. We do have reports left, so I'm going to start with you, Mr. Lavender.
Steve, are you ready? I wanted to share a picture. Mr. Raines came out to our Be Extraordinary Wall Celebration on Friday, December 17th. It was an honor to recognize Larry for his extraordinary work with our city and have him congratulate our students as well. And there's a picture of Larry in front of our wall, but it was a real pleasure. Thank you for coming out, Larry. Also, the Unity March has been scheduled for Friday, January 14th because of concerns about putting 800 students on buses this year. The decision was made to march around Belago Middle School and hold a rally on our campus. And some students from Cactus and Casa Grande Middle School will be bussed over as well. So we anticipate probably between 900 and 1,000 students participating. They'll be seated outside with appropriate distancing, but the mayor has agreed to come out and do the welcome, so we're looking forward to the mayor speaking. And then Reverend Anthony Edwards will do the keynote. The theme this year is Dr. King's Beloved Community, talking to students about that concept of beloved. And then the Casa Grande Alliance will be sponsoring Voices Contest as a follow-up to that, leading also into a youth conference involving leaders from all three of the campuses to talk about that concept of the love, of a beloved community, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lavender. Ms. McBride?
Only thing I have is the DUI Task Force was out on New Year's Eve. About 65 to 70 first responders were, were out working, and we had, besides Casa Grande Police and Fire, we had DPS Eloy and the Sheriff's Department all here. We made the council chambers a kind of a makeshift dining room, and they were here and they did a great job. It was a cold rainy night, but they did a great job. And that's it.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Powell?
I don't really have a comment tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Lisa?
And I just want to thank Donna and her husband, Mike, for providing the meal. I saw that. You guys, you did tell, tell us that, but thank you for doing that. And I don't have much. Happy New Year. Looking forward to a great year. Of course, COVID is still here. I'm being cautious here with my mask, but hopefully everyone stays safe. Safe. If you're feeling sick, make sure you stay home. And the only other thing is the point in time count for the homeless is on January 27th. So if anyone's interested, Mary Allen is starting to coordinate that, so if anyone would like to participate, it's always a great day. That's it.
Great. Bob?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Everything going good? Your treatments?
Yeah, going well.
Good. I, I've got a couple of things.
Forget Matt?
Oh, Matt. Sorry.
No problem, Mayor. Thank you.
Out of sight, out of mind.
I just want to thank Donna and Mike. They do that every year, cook the barbecue for the first responders on New Year's Eve. And also, I know I have another meeting before then, but the street fair and car show coming up January 22nd, 23rd on Main Street downtown. So if you want to register for that, that was the time. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Matt. A couple of things. One, I wanted to give a shout out. It's not often we get complimentary letters, but we did from one of our, actually one of our construction folks that works with the city on, on a project that he's working on, and it's actually a project out at Cardinal Glass. And it's, it's Rusty Riggs from Capilar. Anyway, I wanted to give a shout out to Really Public Works, Kevin, your, your team working on that. And he's particularly picked out Paul Tyus and Brian Tardif on, on their efforts and work to make this happen. It's, it was devastating news for the project. Paul set up a meeting with the team, and this Logan from Cardinal Glass and Rusty last week, they arrived, the meeting, Paul presented an idea, worked with everyone, and it's a very win-win situation. It was a suggestion that Cardinal Glass could get behind, the project continues to move forward. And when he and Logan left the meeting, they were both very impressed with the efforts provided by the city staff to help the project move forward. It was a very business-friendly and very positive impression with Cardinal Glass. So I just want to read that. And congratulations and thank you both, both departments, for your, your excellent customer service. Really appreciate it. I know I harp on you all the time about it, so it's, it is appreciated. This week, we do have the Casa Grande Art Museum Fence Dedication is this Saturday at 3:00. I don't know if anybody can make that, but the art museum will be dedicating their, their new fence. It's a, it's a beautiful fence. If you get a chance to get out there, go take a look at it. Lots of other stuff going on. I did want to also congratulate this year's city, or not city, but the Chamber Casa Grande Community Services winner, which is the Casa Grande Youth Commission. I think Matt mentioned that last meeting. And then the Business Excellence Small Business is Kaywood Farms. So that's, that's great for them. It's Nancy Kaywood. And then the Business Excellence Large Business, which I did a video this morning for them, was Sun Life Family Health. So congratulations to Sun Life. And then the 2021 Hall of Fame Inductee is the late advocate Fernando Cornejo from Eva's Fine Food. So those will be the awards that are handed out on January 14th. If you want tickets, check with the Chamber. It will be a live event at this point in time at the property. I think it's the property. Yeah. And then just a couple announcements from the library. They always send these out, and they're, they're, they're so good at this. We've got, you can get vaccinated at the, at the Casa Grande Library. This is the main library. And appointments are available from 12 to 6, 12 PM, 12 noon until 6:45 PM on January 7th and February 14th. And all this information that I, I'm reading off here is on our website, so take a look at it. They've got English classes. They've got a winter reading challenge for adults. You can actually go in and get a, get a reading challenge, and you, you finish the challenge and you get into a prize. There's tech classes. You know, if you wanted to learn how to use your latest technology, they'll teach you how to do that. They've got them set up on this January 6th, 13th, 20th, and then 27th. And each has a different one, like intermediate phone training, iPad apps for you. Anyway, movie madness. There's just a ton of stuff here. If you can't find something to do in Casa Grande, you're not looking very hard. So there's a blood drive going on as well, so take a look there. It's Wednesday, January 5th, if you want to give some blood, because there is a huge need for blood out there right now. And there's a Kinder Prep, which is Fridays, January 7th through March 18th. So there's a ton of things for you to do. You didn't get a, have to get a blood transfusion, did you? All right. So that's all I've got. And just again, take a look at our website. A lot of information on it, and I encourage you to take advantage of all of these items. They're all free from your, from your library. And there's just a lot of great things that they're doing out there. So a big shout out to Amber and her team and everything that they do. So that's it. Anybody else have anything else? Last say? Nope.